I guess he's not here. Or maybe he's in the room. Does anybody know? Okay. I don't hate for him to be here and us not. Do you, is there, is there an officer outside? If you could just make sure that he's not in the room in the back before. Okay, great. Hi Pastor. Please come forward.
I'm so sorry. I missed my way.
No, no problem whatsoever. Everyone, if you so choose, please stand with me and remain standing for the pledge to our nation's flag. The prayer first, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
The name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. I read from scripture. Come, my people. Enter thou into thy chambers. And shut the door about you. Hide yourself for a little while. Until the pandemic has passed. This morning, I pray for the mayor and the city council. I pray for every resident of the city. I ask the Lord to take the pandemic away from us. I ask the Lord to visit us. I ask the Lord to give us His grace. And so I formed a little prayer. That I'm going to pray for the mayor and the city council and the entire city of Beaumont. Almighty God. We know that everything is in your power and control. We ask that you keep these new coronavirus away from our city. Give our city mayor and his officials the ability to safely handle this situation around us. Help them to decide the best way to control what we are passing through. Help the people to decide to stay at home instead of traveling about. Holy Spirit, comfort families who have lost their loved ones. Keep us safe and protect us. For in the book of Isaiah, when there was a pandemic, you brought healing to your people. Lord, bring us healing today. In Psalm number 91, your word says, oh God. He said, the Almighty has you in His shadow. And we will say to the Lord our refuge and our strength. In God alone we trust. And surely He would deliver us from the snail of the fowler. And from the pandemic and pestilence around us. He shall cover us with His feathers and protection. And under His wings we will take refuge. His truth shall be our shield. And we will not be afraid of the terror by night or the arrow that flies by day. Nor the pandemic that is around us. No destruction will come over our city. Lord, I lift up your daughter, our city mayor, to you and the council. Continue to guide them. Continue to bless them. And as we live in this city, oh God, I ask you, as I lifted up the city to your care this morning, protect every one of us here through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge to our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, sir. We appreciate you Pastor. May we have the roll. May we have the roll call, please.
Mayor Ames, here. Mayor Pro Tim Philshah.
President.
Councilmember Neal.
President.
Councilmember Getz.
President.
Councilmember Pate.
Here.
Councilmember Samuel.
Present.
And Councilmember Muton.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. We don't have any presentations or proclamations today. So I will move right into public comment. Now would be the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. If you would like to make public comment on scheduled agenda items one through five or the consent agenda, the time to do so is now. If you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip, hand it to the officer. She will bring it to the clerk and we will call out your name. We would appreciate if you'd keep your comments to three minutes. The green light will come on when you approach the podium and the red light will come on when your time is up.
I don't have any mayor.
There's no one that wants to speak? Hey council, your consideration on the consent agenda, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you. There's a motion for approval?
Before you do, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to bring to your attention that two items on the consent agenda.
Okay.
Items L and M were brought to us at the request of the tax assessor collector. And the action is going to be to ratify an action of the Jefferson County Commissioner's Court. And I think Councilmember Getz would have a conflict on those two items.
Okay, that's L and M, councilman?
I don't think I have a conflict, but.
Okay, do you choose not to then?
No, I, I mean, I don't see that there's a conflict there.
Okay, so your motion stands, councilmember? Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously on the consent agenda. Item number one, please.
Ma'am, council, item number one is in ordinance entitled, in ordinance amending the fiscal budget of the city of Beaumont for the fiscal year 2020 to appropriate additional revenues in the general liability fund, to appropriate additional expenditures in the general liability, solid waste, water utilities, and general funds, providing for severability and providing for repeal. Approving the proposed amendments will ensure that expenditures are within the approved budget and that inter-fund transfers are in accordance with the financial policies as approved within the budget document. We usually ask the council to approve amendments each fiscal year. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, council. You've heard the reading of item number one. Is there a motion on this item, please?
So moved.
Thank you. There's a motion for approval, correct? Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor for approval. Is there any discussion? Questions, comments? Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Next item, number two, please.
Item number two is in ordinance entitled, in ordinance amending chapter 22, article 22.02, sections 22.02.001, section 22.02.002, section 22.02.003, section 22.02.005, and section 26.02.006 of the Code of Ordinances of Beaumont, Texas to make changes relating to water and sewer regulations, providing for severability, providing for repeal, and providing a penalty. The administration is recommending that the Code of Ordinances related to water and wastewater charges and deposits be amended. The proposed changes are highlighted in the staff report. I'd like to thank Danette Mickens, Todd Semino, Tyrone Cooper for their help with these proposed changes. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you, council. You've heard the reading of item number two. Is there a motion on this item?
So moved for approval.
Second. Thank you. There's a motion and a second on the floor for approval. Is there any discussion? Questions, comments? Councilman Getz?
Mr. Manager, I've looked at this and I'm correct in saying that this does not actually affect the rates. Is that correct?
It does not.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I got one more question.
Okay, go ahead.
Talking about the apartment complexes, you're not making any changes there. What is this, apartment complexes and mobile home parks where four or more units shall be billed a minimum monthly water service rate of 75%?
Yeah, that was, that was done by the council a number of years, years ago to take into account that you will have oftentimes vacancies at apartment complexes. So the council decided on the 75%.
So, okay.
Okay, all right.
One, one other.
Go ahead.
It looks like one of the things that we're adding is an equipment replacement charge of $145. Is this primarily because of damage that we see to the electronic metering devices? Is that what that is anticipated for?
Yes.
Okay, so in that regard, how is it commonly resolved? Because I've had citizens contact me before saying they didn't damage it. What, what do we do? Is it a case-by-case basis? We investigate and, and try to get to the bottom of how it got damaged and if it is determined that the citizen is correct or didn't do it? We waive it or how does that work?
Ms. Mickens and her staff evaluates on case-by-case basis. If Ms. Mickens, with her experience, knows a lot of these customers. We know customers have pulled the meter, damaged equipment before sometimes. But we try to give people the benefit of the doubt. If we have not had problems with a customer, we'll give them the benefit of the doubt and won't charge that fee. But when she and her staff feel pretty confident that the citizen living there damaged the equipment, then they are charged for it.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion also carries unanimously. Next item, please.
Ma'am, council, item number three is in ordinance entitled, in ordinance granting a franchise for solid waste collection and transportation services to Action Trucking Company. According to the Code of Ordinances, no person shall engage in the business of collecting, hauling, or transporting in the city any garbage, waste, or refuse without having a franchise. The franchise provides for a term of one year and a fee of 7% of gross revenues received for service. According to the city charter, franchise ordinances require readings at three separate council meetings. This is the final reading. Today, the administration recommends approval.
Thank you, council. You've heard the reading of number three. Is there a motion on this item, please?
Moved to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor for approval. Is there any discussion? Questions, comments? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Item number four, please.
Item number four is to consider resolution authorizing the city manager to request reimbursement of COVID-19-related expenses from the U.S. Department of Treasury. On May the 26th of this year, the city council authorized me to receive funding from the Coronavirus Relief Fund, which was established within the CARES Act. The amount of funding applied for was $6,587,900 with 20% of the funding eligible for receipt upon application. The city has received the 20% advance. The remaining portion of the funds can be requested on a reimbursement basis, provided that documentation is submitted to verify the funds were spent on continued protective measures. Costs incurred through December the 30th are eligible for reimbursement. And it is anticipated that the city will have enough payroll, payroll costs incurred to absorb the remaining funds available for reimbursement. Therefore, the administration recommends approval.
Okay, council, you have heard the reading of number four. Is there a motion on this item?
So moved.
Thank you. There's a motion and there's a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, there being none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion also carries unanimously. Item number five, please.
Ma'am, council, item number five is to consider resolution to direct the designated officer to calculate the voter approval tax rate in the manner provided for a special taxing unit. We had a budget work session on June the 23rd and to discuss Senate Bill Two, which changed the property tax rate setting process. Senate Bill Two contains a disaster provision that permits the city to direct a designated officer, in this case, be our chief financial, financial officer or employee, to calculate the voter approval rating using 8% rather than 3.5% if any part of the city is located in a disaster area during the current tax year. On March the 13th, the president issued a proclamation declaring that the COVID-19 pandemic in the United States constitutes a national emergency. The governor of the state of Texas declared a disaster in every Texas county on the same day. So as a result of the disaster declaration, staff is recommending that the city opt into the disaster provision of Senate Bill Two as specified in the Texas Tax Code. If you have any questions, Todd Semino is here. Be happy to answer them. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you. Council, is there a motion on this item?
So moved for approval.
There's a motion and a second on the floor for approval. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously and we have a work session today, correct?
Yes, ma'am. Ma'am, council, the work session is to, for the purpose of the public, I'll read it. To review and discuss making application to the Texas General Land Office for grant funds related to Hurricane Harvey to be utilized for the design, construction, and other allowable expenses for a new surface water treatment plant to be located on the west side of the city. David Munn with Freezing Nichols is going to come forward and lead the presentation. Will McDonald is here with him with Freezing Nichols. And also in the back, a gentleman that helps us quite a bit is Patrick Willshire with Public Management. It's David Munn.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Hi.
Good morning.
Thank you.
Get this fired up and it will help me in the discussion today. Bart, do I need to?
Power it up or?
Fantastic, thank you. All right. So it looks like we're, we're going to be projecting behind you. So again, good afternoon, everybody. My name is David Munn. I'm with Freezing Nichols. Have been involved with a number of different projects with the city and so happy to be back again. The main focus today is the West Surface Water Treatment Plant. But really, a lot of the discussion is going to be setting the stage for the question of what is the long-term plan for the city's drinking water supply? And much of that discussion is going to be about, well, what are your existing facilities? What benefits do they provide and what risks do you still face as a city with your current system? So for that reason, we're going to kind of go over the system. I know, council, you're very familiar with it, but for everybody else's benefit, just to talk about some of the main features. The main feature of your drinking water system is the Pine Street Surface Water Treatment Plant shown there on the east side of the city. It receives water from Lawson's Pump Station that takes it out of a canal that brings it down to about where the Nature's River is and delivers that raw water to the treatment plant for, for treatment. You also have a groundwater facility, the Loeb Groundwater Facility there on the northwest side of the city. It provides about 10 million gallons of water per day. So it helps supplement your system, but again, it's Pine Street that is the main source of your drinking water. And then the other thing that we're going to be talking about today is this proposed west side plant. So we've got a general area identified, but certainly it's not site-specific at this point in time. So those are the different pieces we're going to be talking about today. Again, I'm going to go through each one and talk a little bit about its condition and just where we are in time with, within the lifespan of that facility. So starting with Loeb, unfortunately, as you know, Loeb was one of the facilities that flooded during Tropical Storm Harvey. It was then put offline from 2017 until 2019 where it was brought back online. And then for reasons I'm going to talk about here momentarily, it has since been turned off again. I'll, I'll circle back to that momentarily. But from a big picture, it, it's not yet been protected from future flooding. If we had another Harvey event, it, it would likely flood again. It's also aging infrastructure. So one thing that your staff has been doing to be proactive is to go through and do what's called a condition assessment of all these facilities where we look at the condition, what the expected long-term lifespan is of that facility and what the cost would be for bringing it up to current standards. So here's just a couple snapshots. It is an aging facility. And so, for example, some of the concrete storage tanks and steel storage tanks aren't in the best of condition and will need replacement probably in the next decade or so. The, your staff is working hard to repair the necessary damages from the flooding. There was electrical, mechanical damage during the flood. They brought it sufficiently online to allow it operation, but in the long term, there's going to need to be more investment there if that's going to be a long-term part of your water system. The other thing is that it's a very challenging water system. So right now, you have a system that applies surface water and blends it with groundwater. Those are two different types of waters and, and so you have some challenges there in maintaining that high standard of water quality that your staff has set for the city. So just an example, this year, we were evaluating the, the system. We were monitoring the system very closely. And based on historic experience, we were anticipating that there may be a severe decline in the disinfection residual. That's, that's where the essence of this challenge is. With the groundwater, it's difficult to maintain a long-lasting, stable residual. Now, now the staff has done a great job. The operations group has done a great job in keeping their arms around it and making sure that every citizen has great, high-quality water. But it just takes a lot of effort. And at times, staff actually has to turn the facility off, which is what has been happening here recently. So the underlying point here is it's a challenging water system to manage. If you see the Loeb system as a long-term part of your water portfolio, you're going to need a major investment there. We've, we've presented this slide before, so I'm going to go over it in kind of an overview manner. If you'd like me to go through line by line, I'd certainly be happy to talk about them. But the, the bottom line there, the $62.5 million is the investment that would be required over the next decade or so to totally replace that facility. It, it's a big number. It's a big investment. And you would still be straddled with operating that difficult groundwater system.
Could you, could you go through that in a little bit more detail?
I, I'm happy to. I wanted to, to make sure I was using your, your time wisely. And if you'd like.
Last item on the agenda and we've, we've got time.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you for asking the question. So we're, we're going to be operating the system. You're going to be operating the system for at, at least the next three to five years. So there are going to have to be some short-term investments there. I think on coming council agendas, you may be even seeing some items for some short-term investment. And that's, could be upwards of $2.5 million. But that's not the overhaul that would be needed for a long-term use of that facility. The facility itself, which is the, the pump system, the electrical system, the ground storage tanks there at what we call the Loeb Facility, that's a $20 million investment. Those are big storage tanks, some reasonably large pumps. So it's, it's, it would take an investment to fully replace that facility. It's not. Please, please.
The short-term improvements, the $2.5 million that you say that we're going to have to spend to continue to use the Loeb Facility for the next three to five years.
Yes, sir.
What kind of things are those?
Yeah, absolutely. So we're, we're blending water in your system, the surface water and, and the groundwater. So one thing that is going to help maintain a more stable residual and a more stable water quality is to try to make those waters a little more similar. So there's some chemical injection improvements that are recommended, a caustic soda injection system to, to be specific. I believe your operator also has a list of some pump and well improvements that your staff is currently looking at in terms of improvement. And so that's where that rough $2.5 million number comes from. And I've got an asterisk there. That's pending confirmation by some ongoing efforts.
And then when you move down to the next line item, replace the Loeb Groundwater Facility of $20 million.
Yes.
You're talking about replacing all of the tanks that are there, all of the pumps, all the electric, I mean, is that a complete replacement? Is that what that's envisioning?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and is that because what we have there now has aged to the point where it cannot continue to be used or rehabilitated? Is that something that, I, I'm trying to figure out what is wants versus, you know, needs? And so, you know, can you help me with that?
Absolutely, I'll try. So I would say everything on this list is going to be a need over the next decade or two. Immediately, you, you don't have to go out and spend $20 million tomorrow to replace those tanks. But what the condition assessment showed is that due to the age and the condition of those tanks, over time, in what we'll call the midterm, you, you will be at a point where you're going to have to make those improvements if you want to continue operating this system.
And the tanks are becoming corroded? There are, what is it about the tanks?
We're starting to see structural signs of impending structural failures there. Cracks in the tank, corrosion, and loss of metal in the steel tanks. So signs that we're nearing the end of its life.
Okay, thank you.
My, my pleasure. Thank you for the question.
I have a question. So if the tanks are nearing the end of their life expectancy, why would we spend $2.5 million?
We need to get, we need to get through the next five years if we move forward with this new plant on the west end, which he's going to get to in a minute. So.
I'll let you finish. Okay.
No, you, you asked a, a perfect question. And that's a question that we've been talking to your staff quite a bit about is what is the minimum investment needed to, to get us through the, the near term? Great, great question. So Councilman Getz, to, to, to finish responding to, to your first request, I'll, I'll walk through these other line items. The Pine Street Surface Water Treatment Plant, by comparison, is, is kind of compact. You know, most things are there on site. This groundwater system is spread out a bit. You've got off-site wells. The plant itself is a ways away from the city. So there's much more in the terms of collection system lines to just get that water from the wells to the plant and then into the city. So we've got a number of utility line costs here. You see the groundwater collection lines, the cost of the wells themselves at $6 million. And then the distribution lines to come from Loeb into the city at $17 million. Now, one thing that we've been talking a lot about lately is system pressure. Your Pine Street facility is on the far east side. Your Loeb Groundwater Facility is on the far northwest side. And what happens is, because those sources are so far away, there are areas of the city that it's difficult to maintain an, an ideal pressure. We're still getting water to those citizens, but it's not at the pressure that your, your staff and the city would think is ideal. A couple solutions there. The, the more long-term solution we're going to talk about later is a, a west side plant there on the west side to maintain pressure. Another solution that had been considered was this 36-inch Delaware water line. And that's another main transmission line to bring water from the Pine Street plant over to the west side more efficiently to help maintain pressures. And so that's what we mean by that 36-inch Delaware water line, cost of $10 million, to efficiently. to efficiently run the system. If you were to keep Loeb and Pine Street as your only sources of water, that would be a recommendation to allow you to provide not only the quantity of water, but the pressure that your community is going to need.
Question.
Please.
Right now, and for a considerable period of time after Hurricane Harvey, Tropical Storm Harvey, we relied on all of our water coming from the Naches River.
Yes.
That's where we're at right now.
Yes.
Why do we even need to do anything with Loeb? Is it just to have redundancy in case something happens with the water treatment plant or the water pump plant at the Naches River, or is it for some other reason?
So it's not only for redundancy. It depends on what the demand is in a given year. So you've been fortunate in past summers since Hurricane Harvey that demand hasn't been as high as it can be at certain times because it's been, or I'll say, it has not been an exceptionally dry year. When you get into a drier year, people are using more water, your demand has gone up to levels that it's been at in the past, then Loeb becomes an essential part of your system. And just as an example, right now, staff is talking about needing to turn Loeb back on because of the need, because of the demand today, even though it's not ideal because of those water quality challenges I mentioned earlier. Your staff is having to consider today, geez, we really need to get it back on, even if it's for a short amount of time, to refill some of the elevated storage tanks.
So when the city of Belmont is using a lot of water, do we not have capacity through the Pine Street plant to meet that?
No.
Okay.
No, you don't.
And that's when the pressure goes down.
And that's when the pressure goes down.
We've seen it.
Does that happen a lot? Do we know?
I can't answer that.
And Nathan Beachy here, they can answer that.
As he mentioned, Councilman, right now is a great example. We've got a number of water line breaks throughout the city. We had Dishman down for cleaning. We finished that cleaning. We simply can't fill the tank, the Dishman tank, with the current pressure that's in the system. It's too low. There's too much demand. There's too many water line breaks going on right now. So we've got to be able to get more water into the system than we can get off that Pine Street plant. You can only pump so much out of Pine before you start putting so much pressure on those distribution lines right outside the Pine Street plant that you'll start blowing water lines out of there. You can't pump enough pressure out of that plant to fill the entire system.
It's fair to assume that demand is higher in the summer when it's hot as places, right?
Absolutely.
So wouldn't...why wouldn't we schedule a tower for cleaning outside of the summer months?
Ideally, we probably should. We got into a situation where the tank was inspected, and it was in such a condition that we felt it needed to be cleaned while it was down for inspection. It had already been drained, and so we took the opportunity to go ahead and do that.
Okay.
And they have to be drained for inspection on a periodic basis.
Is that inspection mandated by some governmental agency?
TCQ. Yes, sir.
Any more questions on this Loeb system, or should I give you a moment or two more to consider this before moving on?
I'm good.
Okay.
Just a quick question. It might be for staff. Is this what we're talking about? It doesn't sound that different than the work session that we did at the airport and then later again. Has anything changed in it?
Well, the dollar amount for the possible west-side plant, and then we didn't want to make application without the council.
Okay. I was just making sure because it didn't sound...
No, you're right. This is the third time we've talked about this prior to the last.
Absolutely.
Would you say a year or two?
Yep.
And just a little more detail you'll provide in a minute.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
No problem.
Missed something.
Okay. So moving on to that next piece of infrastructure, this is the Lawson's Pump Station. As we can see, it flooded during Tropical Storm Harvey. There it is on the banks of the Naches River. There's actually a siphon. It's not taking water directly out of the river. It's actually, there's a pipeline, a siphon that goes under the river to an L-N-V-A canal on the other side. So what happened during Harvey? Obviously, from the picture, it flooded. You lost your raw water supply. Since that time, because of some of the issues that were imparted due to Harvey, you've actually lost some of your capacity there at Lawson's. We believe it was effects of some of those pipelines shifting, possibly getting some air entrapment and other issues. It's not protected from future flooding, much like Loeb. If you have another Harvey, it will likely flood again. And then also, that Naches River crossing, that is a single point of failure in your Pine Street system. If you lose that siphon, then you've lost the main heart of your system. You and your staff, though, you've identified this risk, and you're well underway of addressing it. You came up with the vision of this new raw water pump station that's going to be at higher ground and a redundant pipeline to take water from that new pump station down to Pine Street. You've already authorized and are underway with the design of that pump station. The pipeline, which lags a little bit behind it, should be coming for your approval in the near future. The cost of those, as you've seen in the past, is a combined total of $37 million for that new pump station and pipeline, and that's going to provide you some redundancy and additional reliability and capacity on your raw water side of your system. Moving now to Pine Street. So again, this is the heart of your system, your primary source of drinking water. It is also, though, an aging facility. This is not a facility that's been constructed in recent decades. It's got some history to it. It experienced some partial flooding during Tropical Storm Harvey. We see there on the, kind of the right side, the east side of the site, you see where the water started encroaching. It did flood some of your facilities. It came near to flooding some very critical electrical components, which would have been a catastrophic failure, so we're considering that a near miss. Your staff, though, is addressing those concerns through two means, a flood improvements project, which is about 90% complete, to do some improvements in case an additional flood did occur. They've also come up with a study of an emergency raw water supply. One thing that I didn't mention here is that during Tropical Storm Harvey, what you had to do was you brought in a number of pumps and temporary piping to do what you could to get water to your citizens. That was a complex and challenging effort to have to live through, and so what your staff has asked, the question of, well, is there something that we can do effectively, quickly, affordably, that would allow us, if another Harvey came through before that new raw water pump station is constructed, is there something we could do to quickly get water temporarily into the city on an emergency basis in case that next Harvey event comes before the new raw water pump station is complete? So those two efforts could possibly result in a recommendation of costs of up to $5 million. We're currently working on that emergency raw water supply study, and it could recommend a ballpark of $3 million in improvements. Going back to the age of this facility, you're at a point where you're going to have to start, not start, you're going to continue to make these kind of investments in the facility to keep it running, to replace some of that infrastructure and equipment that's reaching the end of its life. So really, the condition assessment that was done there was one of the first steps in looking at a long-term plan for that facility. And so that comment really brings us to kind of the last half of this presentation, which is what is the long-term plan for the city's water system? To help set the stage for that discussion, I thought I would go through just a summary of the assets and the risks that I've talked about. There on the left, we've talked about the Loeb groundwater facility, Lawson's Pump Station, Pine Street, and then those two new facilities, the raw water pump station and the pipeline. That is a tremendous effort to help you secure your future drinking water system. But you're still faced with some risks even with that investment, and so I would say you're partway through the journey right now. The risks that you still see is that there is still a number of infrastructure that's going to be reaching the end of its useful life, and so you're going to have to make the decision, do I continue to invest in that infrastructure, the question that you brought up, or, you know, do I direct my dollars elsewhere? Some of that infrastructure is still at risk of flooding. There's that groundwater system with the difficulties in managing that water quality that we mentioned earlier, along with the low-pressure situation on the west side. And then the final reminder that you still have a single point of potential failure, which is that Naches River crossing. So with all of that kind of laid out on the horizon, the recommendation that your staff and Friesen Nichols and others have come with is this future west-side surface water treatment plant. So the benefits that we see in this solution to solve that issue that we brought up on the last slide, to solve all those bullet points and risks, is that this is going to take water from an L-N-V-A, a portion of the L-N-V-A canal, which is not impacted by Harvey. It's going to be out of your flood zone. It's going to increase reliability and resiliency, enhancing and dealing with both your water quality issues and your pressure issues, and also provide a long-term option for, if you wanted to, ultimately replace Pine Street. Now, phase one, we're not going to go in. That would not be the smartest use of economic dollars to totally replace Pine Street. You've got a lot of life there, but this provides you the footprint and the start to move towards that in the long term if that's what you choose to do. Yes, sir?
David, what kind of timeframe are we looking at on Pine Street? I mean, you talked about three to five years on Loeb, but we all, well, some of us were around when they built that thing. And it was last century, not last week.
Right.
What kind of timeframe are you looking at in the standpoint of how long do you anticipate Pine Street could continue to function until we do have to replace it? Eight, 10 years?
Certainly not eight to 10 years. So what the condition assessment showed is that you guys got some really good bones in that facility, meaning the concrete, the infrastructure there is pretty strong. It's on the equipment side that we're going to be seeing the investment sooner than later. I think maybe even on today's consent agenda, there may have been an item for the chlorine system replacement. I can't remember if that was part of today's or a future one, but you're already at that point where you're going to see regular replacements of the equipment. The structure of the facility has quite a bit more life in it, though. We're talking about decades-long in the life of that facility.
But the internal things we'll need to replace?
Yeah, starting today and on into the future, you're going to have to continue investing in the internals of it. Yes, sir? So we have done a conceptual cost estimate, including construction, professional services, land acquisition, even the environmental cost, really an all-in total of $100 million. So that's not a small investment, but we believe that it is a worthwhile investment for, you know, the legacy of the systems of your drinking water system. Other work that we've done, we have done a siting study. We've identified three, possibly even more, potential sites for this facility. We've developed a conceptual design, which is based on conventional water treatment and that OPCC, or excuse me, the Opinion of Probable Construction Cost of $100 million that we saw on the last slide. Happy to keep this up here and answer any detailed questions about the concept for the facility before I move to the next slide, which is really more about time and delivery.
Question. How many acres are we actually talking about for this facility?
Oh, I knew that number at one point in time. It's escaping me right now. You have that raw water reservoir, and so it's not a small site. I would hate to guess and give you the wrong answer. Can I get back to you with that?
Sure.
Okay.
But it is fair to say it's going to be at least a couple of acres, isn't it?
More than that, more than that. It's with the storage that we've planned, you see, we've got a 70-million-gallon, which is a seven days of raw water storage. That is probably larger than what you have at Pine Street right now in terms of overall acreage.
And you've identified sites, various sites, of raw land, or is it going to be something that we have to use condemnation for?
It's raw land.
Raw land?
Right next to L-N-V-A.
Okay.
In terms of schedule, you know, we've laid out a schedule here with a number of steps, including determination of your funding source, property acquisition, preliminary design, environmental permitting, final design, bidding, and construction, which lasts approximately five years for all of that, which means you could have this facility online as early In terms of recommendation from myself and speaking for staff, you know, our recommendation is, we do need to do those short-term improvements at Loeb. That is going to be a part of what's necessary to provide water to your system until such a time that a west-side plant can come online. You're doing the right thing with those raw water improvements for the new raw water pump station and pipeline. There are going to be additional Pine Street improvements along the way. That's going to continue being the heart of your system, but ultimately, it's this west-side plant that's going to serve as really the future of your drinking water system and resolve many, if not all, of the problems or risks that you are facing right now. And for that reason, we strongly recommend this. I would be happy to answer any questions that you guys have for me at this point in time.
I have a question.
Please.
That might be more for the manager. How is the, so 15 million gallons per day that now we're going to have to purchase from the L-N-V-A board, right? How does that work versus right now, we get it for free out of the Naches River?
Well, you don't get it for free because we pay right now the L-N-V-A X amount a year. We get you the exact amount. It changes, but it's a good amount. So we paid for, actually, we paid for a portion of that saltwater barrier up there, and there's an ongoing annual expense to us as part of that. But you're right that if this plant is built, we will have to pay to take additional water out of that canal.
Do you see that increase in the price for the consumer?
Possibly, yes.
If we were to do this, would this mitigate against the need for that $10-million Delaware pipe?
We're not planning to do that at this time. That's what he was saying. If you didn't do this new plant, you would need to make those possible $62 million worth of improvements to Loeb, which included that 36-inch line.
So, okay.
Now, that's something we're evaluating on an annual basis as well, but right now, I don't think we're recommending that 36-inch line.
We won't need it if we put the west-side plant in.
That was my point.
Yep.
Yeah.
He was just showing you that 62 million estimated cost is if we weren't considering this new plant, what would need to be done, and at the same time, you still have the blending issue and...
So the point is, with Loeb, we'd be spending $62.5 million for a short-term bridge, literally, that isn't going to last as long as the investment on the west side of town, which is $99 million.
I might just tweak that a little bit in that if you invested that $62 million in Loeb, it would be a long-term investment. I mean, that would be... I mean, that would be building a new facility there, and you would get, you know, 50-plus years of operation out of it. So that would be a long-term improvement. That would be for 10 MGD versus 15 MGD for this Pine Street. And so we feel that Pine Street, or excuse me, we feel that the west side investment is a better investment because it gets you away from the blended system. It gives it to you in a location that is closer to where the need is, and so there's better pressure throughout the system. So we see the $100 million investment as a better investment than trying to rebuild, oh, excuse me, Loeb, which is not ideal for you right now.
And it gets you away from, you're all the same, in other words.
Exactly, yes.
Question. Hardin County has experienced a lot of growth and increased demand in water capacity. If we were to do this and build a new west side treatment plant, would the Loeb facility be marketable? Is that something that a municipality or jurisdiction in Hardin County could consider purchasing and use for their resources that's closer to where they are?
I think it's quite possible. I believe the city actually bought Loeb from a former owner, and so it's not unheard of to buy and sell these assets. It could be, I don't know.
Staff has discussed that. We believe that's a viable option. So if this new plant's built, let's say five years from now, and we did not need Loeb anymore, we would approach them to see if it would meet some of their needs.
Any other questions, y'all? Very complete. Thank you so much. We appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
Seeing you again.
David, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Patrick Willschauer is in the back. Key staff is here. What we'd like to do is, if the councils in agreement move forward, make application for these funds. And at this time, it sounds too good to be true, but what we're hearing is if these grant funds are approved, they pay 99%. We would have a 1% match. And so we...
How fast can we apply for?
We...
Can you take it with you, David, on the way out?
Well, that's what we'd like to do, but we definitely want to know if there's consensus or, I'll use the word agreement, with four or more of you to move forward.
So where would we be applying? This is Texas Development...
Texas General Land Office.
Land Office. And you're saying that if we were awarded this grant, we would only have a 1% match?
That's what they're telling us. If Patrick Willschauer, you want to state anything else, or he's with public management helping us, he'll help draft the application. He's helped us in the past, very knowledgeable, excellent to work with, so...
Good afternoon. Yeah, I guess just to answer that question, councilmember, is that it's a 1% match period. You know, certainly, the project has to mitigate an event, which is, this has clearly been presented to do so. The applications currently are due on October 28th of this year. So we've worked, you know, staff has worked pretty diligently to get to this point, to identify this as a potential application. Application is relatively extensive, very exhaustive amount of work will go into that to justify it. So it's here, it's real, and it's available to you.
What's the likelihood of getting it?
Yeah, so there are several scoring factors. The good thing about that is that they're objective scoring factors, and so, you know, the score is what the score is. We've identified, you know, this project using your entire CCN, and so some of the things that go into that is the number of people that are impacted, the amount of money that you request against that amount of beneficiaries, we'd call them, and then the percent of the jurisdiction that would be impacted. And so this is a, in my opinion, a very high-scoring application that has great potential. You can't guarantee anything because you don't know what the rest of the competition's going to be throughout the Harvey-impacted region, which is 49 counties. And so you've got hundreds of cities and counties themselves and special districts that will apply for these funds. But we have a very high score on this application.
How much money is available in this grant?
It's actually split out a few different ways. So we have a round one for Harvey-impacted regions of 1-point-plus billion. There will be a round two for Harvey for another 1-point-plus billion, and then there will be a regional method of distribution for this southeast Texas Planning Commission of over 60 million. Presently, the only thing available to you is round one competition of over $1 billion.
Very good. That's a great job, everybody. Thank you all so much. We appreciate it, and that's just really good news.
Thank you all. So our plan would be to work with public management, Freez and Nichols, move forward, make application before this October, the deadline.
Okay. All right, that concludes our work sessions, our work session today. I'll now move to public comment. Now's the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. If you would like to make public comment today and haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip, hand it to the officer. The city clerk will call out your name as it was received. As I mentioned earlier, we would appreciate if you would keep your comments to three minutes. The green light will come on when you approach the podium, and the red light will come on when your time is up.
Veronica, and I think it's Quesada, 6590 College Street, Beaumont, Texas. Hello, good afternoon.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Veronica Quesada, and this is my son, Ramondo Martinez. Our story was aired on the 18th of June 2020 by KFDM. Mr. Councilman Getz went ahead and was on the news, and he stated that he could not do anything because of the officer who showed up to my house had asked me several times for an ID. He also said it was under investigation. So I want to know, how far is the investigation going on that case? You also said you didn't have time to go and watch the videos. Well, I brought the videos to you. Would you like to watch the one where she goes into my house and asserts the power that she has, that y'all have invested in her? Or would you like the one where he slams my son against the vehicle? Or would you want the one where he brags to his officers, or to his wife, actually, on the phone, how he just, his kickboxing classes had paid off when he beat my son up while he was fighting a 15-year-old? Would you like to watch the one where there's a lot of police officers disgusted about how she acted and the actions she took on me and my children and my family? I want answers, and I am here to seek and demand justice for what these officers did to me and my son. And not just my son, but also my babies, and they couldn't come in here because they couldn't stay quiet because they're only two and one-years-old. But my whole family was here. What you see here is what you get. This is my family, and I'm here to stand up for my kids. Do I believe you are racist and biased? I definitely do. I also reached out to Mayor Ms. Ames for an appointment.
No, please, no name-calling, okay?
You know what? I'm sorry, but if I have to speak my mind here, I'm gonna. My voice is my kid's voice and my own voice, and I'm gonna be and make it heard because what y'all have done or what these officers did to me and my family was not right, and no one is doing anything about it. I went to Singleton as well, the chief of Singletary, and he told me that my time was up. I only had 30 days to do the complaint against these officers. I did it three months after the fact. Why? Because this officer lady who went to my house, she trains at a gym across the street from where I live. This gym was open throughout quarantine, and no one did nothing. But I heard Councilman Getz was trying to get actions on the mayor for going to the salon. But yet he couldn't do anything about the fact that I brought it up to him and told him that this gym had been opened all through quarantine. And this lady still did what she did to me and my children. And where is the actions on that? Where is the investigation? How far has it gone? And how far is it now? When is anything going to be done? This lady passes by my house every day, every day spying on us, looking at us. Should I live in fear? Should my children live in fear? My constitutional and my civil rights were violated. Who do I run to? Who helps us? Because I'm poor and because I come from a Hispanic family, because I live in the trailer parks, I'm not good enough for y'all? So who is good enough for y'all then? Do I have to be rich and have a position the way y'all do so y'all can get some interest in me and my family?
Ms. Veronica?
I am upset, and you cannot ask me to be quiet. I have every right to, and that's one of my civil rights and my constitutional rights too, freedom of speech.
We have...
I'm not disrespecting you at all.
I understand that, and I didn't say you were, but your time is up.
I am sorry, three minutes is not going to do justice for me.
But we will have someone talk with you after the meeting. I don't know the details, but we'll have someone talk with you after the meeting, okay? Thank you for coming. If you'll wait.
That's all I have, mayor.
Okay, there's no other citizen that wishes to speak?
No, ma'am.
You sure? I thought there was a bunch back there.
Let me just double-check with her, but that's the one I got.
Okay. All right, well, we'll go ahead and start with councilmember comments then. I'll start with you, Councilman Neal.
No comment, mayor, thank you.
Okay, Councilman Getz?
A couple of comments, mayor, thank you. Regarding the last speaker, my understanding is that matter is still under investigation. That was the subject of a KFDM story. The lady did reach out to me. I investigated it to the extent that I could, and I became satisfied that the response by the police department was precipitated by a complaint of animal cruelty. And my understanding of the law is that when a police officer asks you to identify yourself, you don't have to do that unless you're under arrest, you know? And I don't know that when she was asked to identify herself, she was under arrest. But she was there, being faced with being served with charges for animal cruelty, and that is part of the factors that led to the situation getting where it did. And because it's still under investigation, I've told her that I cannot comment on further, and I'm not going to. So her remedy is, if she feels like she has been treated unjustly, is, like any other citizen, to get a lawyer and proceed accordingly. But I can't comment on something that is under investigation. The other thing that I want to address is the comments made by the city attorney at the very beginning of this meeting, saying that I needed to recuse myself from voting on two items on the consent agenda, simply because they were put on the consent agenda by my wife, who happens to be the Jefferson County Tax Assessor Collector. I want the public to understand exactly what these items were and why I did not feel it necessary for me to recuse myself from voting on it. As everyone probably knows, the Jefferson County Tax Appraisal District sends out letters of tax notices to people through my wife's office. The taxes, the tax appraisal office does the appraisal. They relay that information to the tax assessor, and the tax assessor then sends out the notices to people to pay their taxes. Sometimes the information that is provided to the tax assessor's office from the tax appraisal office is incorrect. And these are two cases in which that happened. The mail didn't get where it needed to be, and the citizens who did not get notice because their address was incorrect asked that penalties and interest be waived. And we're not talking about a lot of money here. We're talking about, in one case, a waiver of $86.22, and in another case, a waiver of $194.15. And the reason that these entities or citizens ask that their interest and penalty be waived is because they didn't get appropriate notice of their tax bill. Now, Jefferson County Commissioners Court already considered that and agreed to do so. But because we are also a taxing entity, we are also being asked to do so. This is coming through my wife's office in a professional capacity. It doesn't benefit me. It doesn't inure to my benefit one bit, so I don't see how I could possibly have a conflict of waiver on that, and that's why I did not recuse myself. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, councilman.
No comment, mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman, Paige.
Thank you, mayor. As was alluded to earlier, we're using a whole lot more water because of the heat. We want to remind everybody to drink the water and drink as much as you can because a lot of times it causes some severe problems when people are dehydrated, and they don't think they are. So make a point of, they tell us we should be drinking eight glasses, which is basically a gallon of water a day, since 70% of our body is made up of water. Make sure the kids and all the family, because when they're young, they think they're going to live forever, and they're out in this kind of heat, and if they don't drink enough water, they can have some serious physical issues. So it's particularly incumbent on us at this time when it's 100 degrees outside. So it seems like it's a simple thing, and we all should know that that's what we need to do. Remind your friends to keep an eye on those kids because if they get overheated, they can have heat exhaustion or heat stroke, just like anybody else. So be careful, particularly when it gets up 95 and 100, and the humidity is what it is. So take care of yourself. Tomorrow's, July the 15th, just to remind people that haven't filed their income tax, tomorrow's the last day, and I'm sure our federal government needs the money. But hopefully, you'll get some back. And also, I want to congratulate Mayor Pro Tim Fellshaw. I know his church is taking on a new vision, and I know that's going to be exciting for all his members. So congratulations. We do live in one city, and I'm really proud of all of us and our city. That's it, mayor.
Thank you, councilman. Councilman Samuel.
Yes, thank you, mayor. We're in the midst of a national emergency, and there's been a declaration of disaster issued for the area. I'm having growing concerns about a decision that we made several weeks ago. And with what I've seen over the past three weeks, we continue to see an increase in the number of cases that are showing positive. We've not reached the peak at this point. We're looking at schools opening. We're looking at hospitals increasing in their occupancy, particularly those that, those number of beds that's been allocated for COVID patients. And with all of that, I'm a bit uncomfortable with us moving forward to open the additional facilities at the end of the month. And I would like to have the opportunity for us to reconsider that. If I'm asking if there's anyone else that would second bringing that back to council next week to reconsider our position as to whether we're going to continue to open additional facilities or we're going to be cautious. I know that we're dealing with property or economics versus life. I choose life, and I am not comfortable that it is in the best interests of our citizens to open additional facilities at the end of the month. So I'd like anyone that is considering that or would consider it to just let me know. I just want it to be known that I don't feel good about opening additional facilities.
Okay, thank you, councilman. Okay, thank you, Councilman. Councilmember Muton.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Samuel, I would be more than happy to second your motion, because I too would like to err on the side of caution. The numbers are rising, and I've even spoken to the city manager, even for city council agenda items. If we could even, I would rather see us go to a meeting twice a month so that we could just be safe. I would rather be safe and cautious than to not be. The beds are filling up, and we are near capacity ourselves here in Beaumont. Not to mention Houston is at capacity. And if we have nowhere to go, then we're probably going to be in worse trouble than what we are right now. So I would be more than happy to second that motion for you. Also, I would like to say today is election day. We have local races and also state races that are very important. Please get out. The polls are open until seven. Please get out, exercise your right to vote until 7:00 PM tonight. We have not met in the past couple of weeks. So I want to continue to thank all of our first responders, our frontline, all of our healthcare workers that are dealing with the COVID epidemic. And have some condolences that I would like to express to the family of Mary Wells. She was the owner of All My Children daycare. My son went there thirty-six years ago. Excellent, excellent daycare. I could not have worked without entrusting Mary and George Wells to care for my child. Just excellent people, excellent daycare, and condolences to that family. Also condolences to Liza Hankston, to the family of Hattie Dumas. Also to a constituent that, her name is Bobby Scott. She had twin boys that she gave a birthday party to. And she did snow cones and invited all of the firemen and all of the policemen out. She passed a week ago at forty years old. But she was so excited about the birthday party, she called me and invited me to come out to the party and invited all of the first responders because her children. One of the twins, I believe, was, loved the police department. The other twin loved the fire department. So she invited all of the staff of the fire and police department out to their birthday party. And I just would like to give condolences to her family. Also to the family of Trey Thomas, the family of Carol Jean Cooper, family of David Pugh, the family of Alfred Jones Senior, Robert Burton, Pierre Como, Kelvin McMahon, Terrell Vaughn, and one of my church members, Mrs. Mary Lewis. So, and that's just to name a few, and that's the few that I know of. So whenever I do give condolences, I give condolences to the families that I made aware of, that are in my ward, and some people that are personally in my life. We received an email from a citizen, all of us did, including the mayor, that talked about the deaths that are occurring in Beaumont. And on the day that we received it, there was a murder-suicide right in my ward of Mr. Kevin, Kelvin McMahon. And so after I read it, I even told him, I said, next, at our next council meeting, I'm going to bring it up. Because the citizen wanted to know if we even discuss the deaths or people dying, the crime. And I want everybody to know that, first of all, we live in this community and this city just like everyone else. It's a concern for all of us. I tell people all the time, if the crime is happening one block away and the police is in the other block, somehow it's just never going to happen when the police are right there. And most of the crime in our city are the death or the homicides are people that are in relationship with each other. It's unfortunate. It's sad. But I don't want anyone to ever think that this council is not concerned about the homicides and the crime in this city. It is a major, major concern for all of us. It's just not a perfect formula that we can come up with to solve the situation. And if anyone has that formula, please let us know, because we'll be happy to use it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilmember. Councilman Paige, you had something else?
Yes, since we have been gone, I continuously say what great people we have living in Beaumont, Texas, and what an impact that they've had on other people. And over the last couple of weeks, we have lost some really spectacular individuals. One is Bud Leonard. Bud was nanny, years old, and I literally have known Bud since I was a kid. He played football at Lamar, was one of the original founders of the Cardinal Club with my dad and Preston Graves and a few other gentlemen. He distinguished himself in so many areas. He was in the advertising business, had an exceptional advertising company. Goodwin, Dan and Mom, Whitfield, and they did exceptional things before he went to work at Lamar University. And if there was something going on around Lamar University, Bud Leonard was there. If it was a basketball game or a football game or non-sports activities, he was there for the theater, the arts. He really contributed a lot to our community and was the, in my opinion, the number-one ambassador for Lamar University for many, many decades. And it's, it's always hard to lose people. And Bud was one of those guys you can't replace. So our thoughts and prayers go out to his family, his lovely wife, son, Will. He is, he's one of those guys that people are going to still be talking about a long time from now, about the positive impact that he had on our city and our university, Lamar University. Bud was a fine gentleman and a, and a great veteran. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Have anything, city manager or city attorney? Okay.
For some reason, I feel obligated, Mayor, to address this, because I don't want to just call conflicts of interest just because, you know, conflicts of interest exist in the statutes. I don't write these statutes. What you were faced with was a request by the tax assessor collector, who we all know is Councilmember Getz's wife. In the conflicts of interest statutes, they're all about transparency for elected governing officials. And the law is clear. I don't write these laws. The law is clear. It says that it's a violation if an elected official acts on something where there is a substantial interest in a business entity that's before you when you act. And the law defines a business entity as a partnership firm, corporation, holding company, joint stock company, receivership trust, or any other entity recognized by law. That would include the county. And when you're elected, you know, we have orientation, and we go over this, what the conflict of interest laws talk about. And it says a person, if you have a substantial interest in a business entity, if you receive funds from the business entity that exceed ten percent of the person's gross income for the previous year, and that's what the law says. I'm reading it from the statute. And it says a local public official is considered to have a substantial interest under this section if a person related to the official in the first degree of consanguinity or affinity, that's blood or marriage, that'd be your wife, then you as the elected official has that substantial interest in that business. Now, if she doesn't receive ten percent from the Jefferson County as part of her gross salary for the past year, then I'm mistaken. But it makes no difference as to whether or not she's doing her responsibility as her, as the tax assessor collector. It only says-
Mayor, this is out of order. First of all, he's-
It's always out of order, Mayor, when it affects it.
This is completely irregular.
Councilmember, I asked the city attorney and the city manager if they have something to say at the end of every meeting, and you took issue with him. If you want to talk after him-
I will. I'll reserve my comments until after he's finished with whatever he wants to say.
Thank you.
And, you know, as a city attorney, I see this as a conflict, and I think I'm duty-bound to bring it to the attention of the elected governing body. The violation of law is personal to him. If he chooses not to recognize it, what it is, you know, that's on him. But the penalty for a conflict of interest is a Class A misdemeanor. And, you know, I just feel it necessary that I just had to bring it to the attention of the council.
I understand. Thank you. Go ahead.
Mayor. I don't receive any funds from any of this waiver that he's talking about. I thought I made that clear, and he's right. It is personal to me. Mr. Cooper, if you feel like I've done something, I'd suggest you refer to the district attorney.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Okay, so just to move forward on the opening of different facilities, I didn't call for a vote because it really wasn't a motion and a second, but we do have the policy that if two council members want to bring something back, then we can do that. And so if there's something specific in there that y'all want to give to the city manager or just overall, please do that, and he'll bring it back to us. In addition to that, I just want to mention, and I talk about this every week, but, you know, COVID is with us every week. So there have been a multitude of testing facilities in Beaumont over the last few weeks, and there are many more coming up. We do, you know, when we have more testing, we do see more positives, but I want to talk about that in a minute. But before I do that, I just want to let everyone know that it'll be on our Facebook pages, both police and government, and on our website, but the National Guard Mobile Testing Team has several coming up in these next several days. Today's the fourteenth. The nineteenth at John Davis Community Center, twentieth at Forest Park United Methodist Church, twenty-first is Alice Keith Center, twenty-second at Sterling Pruitt, twenty-third at Rogers Park, twenty-fourth at Central Park. And then there's a multitude of private testing facilities. First, let me say, I didn't say the National Guard Mobile Testing Team sites that I just mentioned. Like I said, you can find those on our website and on our Facebook pages. They are from nine to four, sorry, eight to four, until they get through with all that their lab can handle. And they are walk-up. Those are walk-up. You do not have to make an appointment. The private facilities, MedExpress, AFC Urgent Care, Ten Healthcare, Legacy Healthcare, Beaumont Emergency Center, Exceptional Emergency Center, CVS Pharmacy, Christus Promptu. And then there's some privately sponsored community COVID-19 testing at Borden Chapel, which is being done by Ten Healthcare, and that's on July fifteenth, so that would be tomorrow. And also the twenty-ninth, and those are from nine to three. Those are by appointment. There's a phone number, and that will be on, as I mentioned, the website. And then also Stonehurst Apartments on Lucas the twentieth from nine to noon.
Mayor, can you repeat tomorrow?
Tomorrow is Borden Chapel, and it's from nine to three. It is by appointment. Nine two six ninety-five twenty-nine. Okay, so if there's any questions, there is a phone number on there too, but all of this is going to be-
On the city and the emergency management Facebook page.
Oh, we, oh, okay, good. Emergency management Facebook page. I didn't know about that yet. I knew we were doing it, but I didn't know it was up. Okay, and on the, once you say the city, you mean the government page? Yes. Okay, so in addition to that, I just would like to announce that there are people out there that get really sick from COVID. Some don't have any symptoms whatsoever. I know people both ways. And I would just like to let everyone know that had, has had, or has been tested positive and has recovered. The blood bank is in dire need of your plasma because there have been multiple cases where people, if they can get the plasma, if someone recovered, these are people that are very, very sick that could die. If they can get that plasma, they recover, and they might not have to go on a vent. And I've been talking a lot to the physicians that are doing this, and we really don't know why no one's coming forward to do this, but not a lot of people are. And we know we've had a lot of tests, the positive tests, and we know we've had a lot of recovered. So if you hear this and you know someone, I actually did yesterday. I sent a text to someone I knew that I knew had recovered, and he didn't even know. We're trying to get that word out. But please, it's not even like when you give blood. It's much less invasive than that, from what I understand. I haven't done it because I haven't had it. But if you are out there and you know someone, please ask them to call the blood center or they can call my office. I can send them to the physician that's really looking for it, and they need all four blood types. They have to be treated with prefer within forty-eight hours, but it could go up to seventy-two hours, but they have to have it. There were people yesterday waiting for that plasma. So please help us with that. I know everyone wants to help. Secondly, I want to reiterate again, I did this before, but I know not everyone watches all the time, but this report that, or this update that we put out every day, the front page basically shows the positives that came back today. Today or yesterday or whatever day it went out, because there's a lot of speculation out there about this, this yellow, which is the second page, this, I guess you'd call it a graph. This is not by the day they came back. This is by the day they were tested, because they had it when they were tested, if they came back positive. So this is the real trending, not so much what you have come back every day. That's why we keep this, because the health department, as they see people recover, they can see when they were tested in the fourteen days. They'll look at it again and see if they've recovered. So I would like to reiterate that, because there's a lot of people that say, oh, we had a hundred today. Oh, my gosh, we're spiked up. Those hundred, some could have been tested two days ago, some could have been tested five days ago, some could have been tested seven days ago and already back to recovery. So this is why this is important. So please don't think we can't count, because we can. This is actually when the people were tested, when the swab was taken. And because they had it when it was taken. And if you look at this, and I hope this is a trend, we can't quite say for sure yet, but when you look at this, the spikes of when people were tested that were very high were between around the nineteenth, nineteenth to twentieth of June, somewhere in there, to early to July, around the sixth, seventh, right in there. The last four days have been down now. Some of these spikes could have been because we had all that testing going on for several days, like we're getting ready to go again this next week. So we might see that again, but that's what we're really monitoring. So right now, it looks like for the last four or five days, we've been really flat and low. The biggest day was like thirteen, which is fairly low because of the hundreds that we've been in. So, but if we see it go back up after this testing, then we have to- So, but if we see it go back up after this testing, then we have to, we will continue to deal with that. But there's no reason, if you're out there and you feel like you have symptoms or you need to be tested because you've been exposed, that you can't. These are community testing sites, there's no charge, these are walk-ups. But then there's several other private sites that I mentioned, but all of those are on our emergency management Facebook page. So please follow emergency management if you haven't because it's new, and then the government page. So this is really important. I want us all to be healthy. As everyone knows, the governor did put in an order, I guess it was about two weeks ago, for masks while you're not talking, eating, or drinking, or if you can't social distance even outside. So actually, I have the wording for that if anybody wants to know what it says, but please wear your mask, make sure you social distance. I'd ask if everyone will please do that. Okay, so that's all I have today. If there's nothing else, we don't have an executive session, so we-
Mayor, one more thing.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. You know, I appreciate the city attorney's obligation to try to notify a potential council member when there's a conflict of interest. The appropriate and professional thing to do would be to contact that council member before the meeting, either by phone or email, and alert them to that instead of coming to the city council meeting and trying to say something at that point. And I would appreciate that if that procedure would be done in the future. Thank you.